Seven, six, five, four, three, two, and one.
Thank you. Welcome to the City Council meeting of May 16th, 2024. I'm calling the meeting to order at 7:30 PM. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Madam Mayor, we have no requests under Roll Call Item A. I will now do the roll call. Councilmember Cunningham?
Here.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Lentz?
Here.
Councilmember Mackin?
Here.
And Mayor O'Connell?
Here. Thank you. May we have a report out from closed session, please? You're muted, Tom.
Thank you. The council met in closed session about two liability claims. The first one is Item B, Claimant Robertson. Council considered and rejected that claim. The second is Claim E, which is Claimant Flores. The council considered and rejected that claim. Conference with legal counsel about pending litigation. The council was briefed and they have directions. And conference with legal counsel on anticipated litigation, separate matter, also were provided directions.
Thank you very much. With that, can I get a first and a second to adopt the agenda as it stands?
So moved. Second.
And all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We will move on to awards and proclamations. And we are going to start with Asian American Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month. May 2024 proclamation, whereas Asian American Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Month. Whereas during this month of May 2024, our city recognizes the history and achievements, tradition of leadership, resilience, and courage shown by our AAPI Asian American Native Hawaiians and Pacific Islander community. And whereas Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders are the second largest ethnic group in the city of Brisbane at 32% and the fastest growing racial group in the United States. And whereas, according to the Federal Asian Pacific American Council, FAPAC, the theme for AAPI Heritage Month 2024 is Advancing Leaders Through Innovation, a continuation of Advancing Leaders Through Opportunity series, paying homage to visionaries and trailblazers who have shaped our AAPI history and culture. And now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Brisbane, hereby recognizes May 2024 as Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in the city of Brisbane. We call upon all community members to learn more about the history of Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders, and to observe this month supporting local programs and activities. Here to accept the proclamation is Kristi Yamawata, founder of the Brisbane Lunch Truck. Kristi has been deeply involved in the Brisbane community for more than 20 years, a founding board member of the Silver Spot Nursery School and former class roommate at Brisbane Elementary School. Kristi has been feeding the community for more than a decade, catering school district events and fundraiser. Welcome, Kristi. You want to turn around here? She wants to get a quick picture. Thank you. And if you'd like to say a few words, you're welcome.
Thank you very much, council. The city's enthusiastic support and partnership with the Brisbane Lunch Truck, especially during the height of the pandemic, has been invaluable to our success over these past four and a half years. I am proud to be an AAPI-owned business in Brisbane. It brings me joy to serve our community, and I'm honored to receive the proclamation on the occasion of the AAPI Heritage Awareness Month. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the next one. And this is proclaiming May 2024 as Mental Health Month. This measure would recognize May 2024 as Mental Health Month in the city of Brisbane to reduce stigma, encourage support, and promote wellness to address mental health and substance use conditions. Whereas in 2021, one out of every eight San Mateo County adults likely had serious psychological distress in the past year. From 2019 to 2021, San Mateo County youths in grade seven and 11 reported chronic sadness and hopelessness, 29% and 43%, respectively, in the past 12 months. And whereas mental health and substance use conditions are treatable health conditions and treatments work, there is no shame in seeking it, and people who have mental health and substance use conditions can recover and lead full and meaningful lives. And whereas, San Mateo County Board of Supervisors is the first in the country to pass a resolution in January 2024 declaring loneliness a public health crisis and pledging to promote social connection in our communities. Given this public health priority, the theme for 2024 May Mental Health Month is Heal Through Connection. And there is a hashtag SMCA against loneliness dot I'm not sure. Ongoing updates are posted at www.smchealth.org. M H M. And now therefore be it resolved by the city of Brisbane's City Council, therefore concurring that the city of Brisbane hereby recognizes May 2024 as Mental Health Month in the city of Brisbane to enhance public awareness of mental health, to help in the stigma and direct members of the community to resources and support for mental health and substance use conditions. And so with this, we have Yoko Ng, San Mateo County Behavioral Health Commissioner, to accept the proclamation and say a few words. I'm going out of order. Thank you. And if you'd like to say a few words.
Good evening, City Mayor, councilmembers, city managers, staff, and residents of Brisbane. I'm Yoko Ng, and I use the pronoun she/her. I'm a member of the San Mateo County Behavioral Health Commission. The County Behavioral Health Commission is committed to the goals of promoting wellness and recovery, enhancing public awareness and knowledge of mental health and substance use conditions, and eliminating stigma. Thank you to the city of Brisbane for proclaiming 2024 May Mental Health Month and very thoughtfully wearing the lime green because lime green is the national color for mental health and represents how we want to bring a bright light to an important issue that may be hidden or seen negatively. Mental Health Month is important to me because recovery is possible through hopes. And starting today, I invite you to take action on one or more options. One, use hashtag SMC against loneliness to spread the word about Mental Health Month on social media. Two, wear a lime green ribbon. You can wear one physically on your clothing or virtually on your social media profile. This can spark a conversation and sharing about mental health. Three, attend a local Mental Health Month event, which I also share the calendar near the entrance. And I personally picked one, which will be happening in Brisbane. That will be on May 23rd, Thursday, at 11:30 till 12:30 at the Brisbane Library located at 163 Visitation Avenue. That event is Soul Soup with Amber Heinz. Soul Soup is a family-style music vital that combines interactive performance and relational education through music. Bay Area native Amber Heinz blends traditional and contemporary music with voice and live drum, a compliment that uplifts, builds social emotional literacy, and creates community for all ages. So welcome and join that if you have time. And lastly, I, once again, I want to thank you so much to the Brisbane community for recognizing May Mental Health Month.
Thank you. And it looks like our audience is wearing the lime green. Almost. Thank you. And that brings us to our next proclamation, which is National Public Works Week, May 19th through 25th, 2024. And their theme is Advancing Quality of Life for All. Whereas, city of Brisbane Public Works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, services that are vital and important to the public health, quality of life, and well-being of the entire community. Whereas, these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of these professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees that are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our transportation, water supply, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential to our citizens. Whereas, it is in the public interest for all city of Brisbane residents and civic leaders to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas, and now be it resolved, I, Terry O'Connell, member of the mayor of the city of Brisbane, do hereby designate the week May 19th through 25th, 2024 as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public work professionals, engineers, managers, and employees to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and advancing quality of life for all. And with that, I have Karen Kinzer and Jerry Flanagan from the Public Works Department to accept this proclamation. Thank you. And if you'd like to say a few words, you're welcome to.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, council. Thank you so much for this recognition tonight. I know firsthand the effort and dedication our entire Public Works staff consistently puts into their work on a daily basis. As often noted, much of what we do routinely goes unnoticed. And although it's never expected, it's still nice to be recognized on occasion. We take great pride in our work. We have done with maintaining the backbone of the community while building and enhancing our many city services for the future. We will continue to work hard to serve this community. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Throw a coin.
Yeah, you know, I just wanted to say thank you so much for the dedication and commitment that you give, not only to your profession, but to the community at large. You're right, Jerry. You know, many times the work that you do might not be on the radar for most folks in the community. But every community member, I think, really understands that that our community is a better place because of the work that all of you do. And, you know, year after year, you guys always do a fantastic job. And I'm just really proud to, to, you know, be a part of the family of our local government with all of you. So thanks.
Colleen?
I was just going to add to what Mr. Flanagan said. There are many, many days that I have had personal experience of saying, oh, thank God for our public works. Where would I be without you? And I, I think probably every resident's been touched by the work that you do. Whether they realize it or not, they totally depend on you. But I've had to thank you many times and so appreciate that you are always there in crisis. Thank you so much.
This is directed at Chris. Conversation we had this morning, one screw at a time. Thanks, you guys.
Okay, we're all jumping in, I guess. Thank you so much for everything that you do. Truly Brisbane's unsung heroes. You get down there in the dirt. You get your hands dirty. And I'm sure that, you know, it's not always graceful. And you do that, you do that work that makes the city continue to hum and work well without you. I don't know where we would be in a big storm. You had your hands full with everything that happened on our New Year's Eve debacle at the beginning of last year. And with the mudslides and all of that, you know, you are the reason why we're prepared the next time something like that happens. So thank you so much for your responsiveness. I know a lot of you have to come in on holidays. You're on call. You have to come in on the weekends. And you drop everything to be there for the city. And many of you don't even live in Brisbane. But I'm sure that you feel like Brisbane is your home. I hope you feel like Brisbane is your home, even if you don't all live here. So we're just so, so appreciative for everything that you do. And thank you so much.
And I would just like to say that thank you all for all that you do. And we do truly appreciate you. We do have a slip on Oral Communications that wants to address this subject. So I'm going to go out of order before you guys take your much-needed leave and rest and invite Nancy Laxamana up because she has asked to speak on this item.
Thank you. I had no idea it was Public Works Week. And I had come to speak on something in Public Works. I remember many, many, many years ago, Karen, you and I took up our rake as we were adopting a Drain Week or, you know, and things like that. I still, I think I have five.
I still have my rake.
And I have my rake. I do want to acknowledge how much we appreciate you. I know I put in little Public Works requests. And I was astounded that, you know, like one I did two weeks ago for the dog park because the grass was getting high, the thistles, the, all those little things that get in their nose and ears. And by the next day, it was done. And then this morning, I put in a request because I became aware as I was leaving town about two weeks ago, I saw a woman coming up from the mobile home park with, with a stroller and with three kids, getting them off to school, trying to maneuver all the weed. So I put in a request today. I got an answer like almost hour, an hour later, saying, yeah, we're going to address it as soon as possible. Because there's nothing worse than seeing a family not being able to navigate that sidewalk, which is so dangerous, and literally had to step into the street. Now, I didn't see them step in the street, but I could tell. And I took the picture this morning around 7:30. There's one part you can't even get to. But I really want to acknowledge everything you do because we do notice. We may not obviously say it all the time, but we so much appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. So thank you very much. And I do appreciate you coming out. We will let you go home if you'd like. You don't need to stay for the rest of our meeting. But if you're so desired, welcome to. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All right, take care.
So we are going to move on to Oral Communications, number one. Are there any members of the public who'd like to speak? Or any members of the public online that would like to speak?
I see a hand raised from Roland.
Okay, Roland, please go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. Thank you for the opportunity. I tried to provide you an update on the high-speed rail before you adjourned to closed session earlier. But I was on the wrong Zoom link, and you had already adjourned to closed session by the time I figured it out. So here is the update. The authority CFO resigned last month. So they currently do not have either a CIO or a CFO. They currently have a $7 billion funding gap in the Central Valley, even after receiving a $3 billion grant from the Biden administration and the remaining $4.3 billion in properly bound in the governor's budget. The only revenue left is $1 billion a year in cap and trade revenues. So they recently announced that they do not have any funding for shared corridors, including the Caltrain extension to downtown San Francisco. In closing, I hope that you will bring these issues to the attention of the Sacramento Superior Court and will consider reaching out to the private sector to bring true high-speed rail to the peninsula, including a maintenance facility in Giro. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Do we have any other members of the public who'd like to speak?
I see no more hands raised, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Then we will go ahead and move to the consent calendar. I have a request from Councilmember Cunningham to remove Item H for a brief comment. So I'm looking for an approval of Items E through G and Item I.
And, okay. I, so moved.
Thank you. Thank you. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then on Item H, Council Cunningham had a comment to make about the Mothers of Brisbane CPR First Aid Training as a cosponsored event.
Thank you. Because we haven't had a public first aid training for a long, long time in town, I'm asking that we, even though the mob has said that it would be open to the public, I'm asking council and staff to make sure that if we go ahead and approve this item, that it is very widely publicized for the public to attend because we haven't had any classes in Brisbane for a long, long time. So this could be an event, if we're going to be providing staff and the space anyway, that we turn this into a really great public event. That's my comment.
With that, can I get a first to approve Item H? And a second?
Second.
And then all those in favor?
Aye.
And I'm going to ask the city attorney, did I need, because we made a comment, do we need to open that up for public discussion?
All right, can't get it off video, but yes, you do, Madam Mayor. At least you have to make the opportunity.
Okay. So we'll go back in time in the Wayback Machine and see if there's any members of the public who would like to make a comment on Item H.
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. And so we'll go ahead and redo that vote. Do I have a first to approve Item H?
So moved. Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for allowing for my transgression on, on, on order there.
Thank you.
Okay. That brings us to Item J, which is Election Issues Update. And I know that we have a lot of documentation on that. So we'll start with the staff report, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item is back on your agenda tonight. You've heard various aspects of it on two other occasions, March 21st and April 25th. Staff was directed to provide information and work with Subcommittee, which consists of Councilmembers Lentz and Councilwoman Davis. There are three issues that the Subcommittee has been evaluating. The first is a directly elected mayor. The second was district elections, and the third was term limits. In terms of staff work, we did provide some background in terms of what other cities in San Mateo County are doing. The directly elected mayor, there are two cities, Belmont and San Bruno, that have directly elected mayors. In terms of district elections, there are 10 of the 20 cities, towns in San Mateo County that elect councilmembers by district. So roughly, or, that's not roughly half, that is half. And in terms of term limits, six of the 20 cities have term limits. As far as the first item, the directly elected mayor that Subcommittee met, they had a series of discussions and recommendations with regards to this. If there is to be a directly elected mayor, they're recommending that the mayor be for two years, which I think is consistent with at least San Bruno, I believe also Belmont. The restriction, though, would be that you could only be reelected once. So you could serve two, 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 two-year terms. As an alternative to a directly elected mayor, the Subcommittee discussed drafting a strict rotation policy. That strict rotation policy could be approved by the City Council or could be referred to the voters directly. Under either scenario, the Subcommittee is recommending that the role of the mayor remain unchanged. If you are to pursue a directly elected mayor, that is something that has to be referred to and approved by the voters. The second item of discussion was the district elections. The Subcommittee reviewed census data from the city's planning department. They reviewed demographic work that was done for the Brisbane Elementary School District, keeping in mind that that school district's boundaries are not quite the same as the city of Brisbane's. They do include parts of Daly City and South San Francisco. The, I think it's fair to say that the data was interesting, but not necessarily conclusive in terms of what the demographics of the, or in the city of Brisbane. The City Subcommittee asked for a meeting with a demographer. That information is provided to you further on in the packet. That meeting happened on May 13th, which was this past Monday, and was done with a demographer that had also worked with the town of Woodside. The Subcommittee will be making an oral report to the full City Council tonight with regards to that meeting. Finally, with regards to term limits, the Subcommittee had a discussion about term limits. Again, this is an item, if you wish to pursue, would be need to be referred to the voters. We reviewed the Subcommittee, or the data from other San Mateo County cities. With, the Subcommittee would be recommending that a maximum of 12 consecutive years, in other words, three-term, three, four-year terms as an elected council, a member of the City Council. If you were to have an elected mayor, those four years or potential four years for the elected mayor would be part of that 12 years. And then a person could, after a two-year break, come back and run again. So that is the basic recommendations. I think at this point, we would refer to the Subcommittee to discuss the demographers' report. They do have a recommendation in terms of moving forward with that. And we do have a slide in which we can ultimately show you a potential budget and services. But I think first, before we get to that, the Subcommittee probably ought to have that discussion with you.
Um, yeah, I think it's important to note to the demographers here.
Is that Douglas Johnson?
That's Douglas, yes. Just in case you have any questions about his scope of work and methodologies. We thought it would be good. we thought it would be good to invite Douglas here so that he could answer any questions directly that you might have. Should we just jump into the slide about that, so then we can ask questions?
We can, we can handle this whatever way the two of you would like. If you want to make preliminary statements or comments and.
I think the council should just receive all the information and then we can.
Okay.
Ask questions.
Yeah, you know, I mean, one of the things that was asked from the council at the last meeting.
Is your mic on?
Your mic?
Yeah, so one of the things that was asked at the last meeting was, hey, we need information. Right? So we've given you guys a phone book of information.
What are you talking about?
Yeah. Well, I guess that's not, not so much, you know. But anyways, it's a good size, you know, you know, thickness of information that, that we felt was really helpful in helping us to kind of get our hands around these complex issues. And, and yeah, so now we're kind of like at that point where we feel there's a good body of information for us to make decisions about whether or not moving forward on these three items. So, yeah. You want to add anything, Madison?
I think that covers it. I think we can all save some stuff for discussion, I guess.
Yeah.
So on the screen now is a potential budget for the demographic work. And I think, again, the subcommittee can kind of go through this with you in terms of what we are proposing and what we, there's a couple of items that we took out of their proposal that we think we can do in-house, basically through Caroline and her, her operation in terms of the website and some of the community outreach.
Excuse me, Clay, is there a way for our technical people to increase the volume on your mic?
Yeah, she's kind of low.
I was told the technical solution is for me to get closer to my mic.
That is a better solution. I can hear you much clearer now, but.
Okay, all right.
I, I just wanted to make sure, I don't want to have you hunching over your mic, but.
That's fine.
It's hard for me to hear you. I don't know how the people in the, in, at home are hearing you.
Okay. Is this better?
Yes, it is.
Okay, all right. So what's on the screen right now is a total proposed budget of 22,500, not to be exceeded by 1,500. That gives us a little bit of flexibility as we go through the contract, pretty normal contract language. The demographic profile and test maps is a $2,000 item. Step two would be the districting, if necessary. So the districting project elements would be $8,000 pre-meetings. So we were anticipating one in-person meeting, that's in-person with the demographer, and then up to three meetings that would be attended through Zoom. Those are slightly less expensive. Then the optional project elements include a mapping tool, which I think the demographer Douglas Johnson can get into with you, what that, how that would work and what it would look like. And that's $3,500. But I think probably be best, maybe if the demographer, or Madison wants to say something first?
Just state law requires you to have four meetings, four public meetings when you're contemplating districts. So that's why we have built in the cost for four meetings, because you might look at that and be like, wow, that's a lot of meetings. We are required to do that to give the public ample time to weigh in on this. So I just thought it was a good side note.
The other thing, just to note, and maybe this is obvious, but the, if we were to hire a demographer, they would work hand in hand with our legal staff in terms of the various laws that we need to be in conformance with the California Voting Rights Act, as well as the state, or national election laws.
And MAPS Act. And the MAPS Act.
And the MAPS Act.
Which is a new thing.
So I know, Douglas, do you want to speak to your services and maybe just walk the full council through some of the stuff that you presented to us the other day?
I'm happy to. I hadn't prepared anything, so forgive me, but essentially the thought is to first do kind of a demographic profile of the city, give you some solid, very specific population and socioeconomic data. And then the council could proceed with district elections. And the, the required hearings that were just mentioned is correct. The first two hearings are more informational and educational for the community, and they're aimed at getting feedback on what are the neighborhoods, if they're a relatively small jurisdiction with really two neighborhoods. But if there are sub-areas within that that are considered neighborhoods together, input on that. Then we would draw draft maps. Of course, residents can also draw draft maps. We certainly encourage and welcome that. And then there'd be at least two hearings in which the council would hear public input on those draft maps, perhaps ask for revisions, and then pick a map that you wish to use. The real challenge is timing. We'd really have to rush to get this in for this year's election. But it'd be, but if you do it for 2026, you have plenty of time.
So, so I have a question, if I may. Are we, where we can ask questions at this point? As a demographer, how do you do your work to differentiate between someone having a, an ethnic sounding name and finding out if that household is truly ethnic or partially ethnic, or someone who has not an ethnic sounding name, maybe ethnic? How do you do that besides with a list serve?
Yeah. So the main data we use are from the Census Bureau. So one is the total population count that comes from the 2020 census. And that is, you know, you probably remember, every household gets a questionnaire. So that is based on the household's actual responses. So it's not surname-driven or anything. It's someone asked them, what ethnicity are you? And they answered. The, the second database we use is from, also from the Census Bureau. It's called the American Community Survey. And it's not a full door-to-door, it's a survey, so it does have a margin of error. But that questionnaire, it's like 30 pages long and asks a ton of questions about everything from plumbing to education. But in there, they do ask, are you a citizen? In order to get it, give us our, the citizen voting age population number that the Department of Justice demands for Voting Rights Act compliance. And that also is a question. So they're asking the people, what ethnicity are you? It's not based on surnames. Those are the two main databases we use for, for Voting Rights Act compliance. We do have the state's data on registered voters and voter turnout, and we will give you that data. Those are based on surnames. They're compiled by the state, so they are an official database. The interesting thing is, obviously, surnames are horrible tool to identify the ethnicity of an individual. But when you start getting to the, to the level of a city block or even a precinct, then the errors each way start canceling each other out. And the data is, is at least in the right ballpark. We do have a census study. They, the Census Bureau has gone through and checked their surname lists, and they come out with a net that about 11% of Latinos are missed when you use a surname list. And so we actually adjust the numbers and give you that adjusted Latino count as well. So, so that's a long answer, sorry about that, but the main, the main data we use are not surname-based. They're actual answers from people about what they, how they self-identify.
And, and this, and then the second, the second survey you said you used, besides the census, and I didn't catch the name?
Oh, yeah. It's the American Community Survey.
And, and do you have any idea of what kind of participation or what kind of amount of data is in Brisbane from that survey?
Essentially, they try to survey one in 14 households. So they collect the data over a five-year period and pool all that data together, but it works out to about one in 14 households.
Over five years, so the data's, in theory, up to five years old?
Oh, it's, yeah, the, the latest data that just came out in January is from, it covers 2018 to 2022. So it's, yeah, in the ballpark of, you're not supposed to act, not supposed to pick a midpoint, but the midpoint of that is about four years ago.
Okay. But the, and, and you say that they, they, they try to survey one in 14 households on a completely blanket? I mean, so they would have done Brisbane?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, definitely.
Okay. Thank you. That's my question for you so far.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Johnson, I have a question for you. Just reading the scope of work and cost proposal that we were provided from you, using the CVRA's definition of protected class, you noted the 2020 census data, California statewide database, and you had noted socioeconomic data, renters versus homeowners, age, education level, other factors in, useful in identifying communities of interest. Could you explain to us, in your assessment, how you parse out communities of interest versus protected class? One in the same, different? How do you distinguish when you approach drawing districts?
That's a good question.
Good question. So there are two very distinct things. So the, under the Federal Voting Rights Act, there are the protected classes. And those are groups that if you divide them or, or otherwise dilute their voting strength, you get in legal trouble with the federal government. And that's, it, it's defined as a race, ethnicity, or language group. So essentially, for all practical purposes, it's Latinos, African-Americans, Asian-Americans, and Native Americans. And there's the other factors that go into how they get on that list. So those are the four groups that are protected class that's covered in the federal law. Then California law defines the community of interest as essentially any group that have a shared interest or perspective on the city. So it could be a socioeconomic group, such as a group that, you know, speaks and tends to speak another language at home or that doesn't speak English at all. It could be based on education or income. So those kinds of things we have data on. It could also be people that live along a major road or people that, you know, are most impacted by the potential sea level rise. It could, so it could be issue, shared issue concerns as well. That's really the goal of those first two hearings, is to gather input on what are the communities of interest that we should be trying to keep together in this process.
And the second question I have, you also say that NDC would analyze whether it's possible to draw one or more majority-minority districts. What is, in your past experience, the minimum number of districts that you've actually drawn up for a city?
Well, the, this, the smallest city is four council districts. There, there are school districts that are only three trustee areas, but. You're talking about in terms of the population of those districts?
Well, because what you say is whether it's possible to draw one or more majority-minority districts. So in terms of approaching a city like Brisbane, which is small, could you potentially say, oh, there's only two districts? Or could you potentially say it has to be five, because there's five members on the council? I'm just looking for clarification based on that sentence in this report.
Oh, I see. Yeah, it's, it's really two different ideas. So the, the question referring there is the, the state law requires that any jurisdiction going through this process to look and see, given however many districts you can draw, can you draw it so that one of them is majority-minority? Or, or more? Some, some cities, you know, we can draw two or three or, we're working in cities now in the Central Valley where all five are going to be majority Latino. There's, you know, in reality, all five are going to be 75% Latino. So that's what the one or more is, is how many of the districts could be drawn to be majority-minority? We would not, so the number of districts that you'll be divided up into is, is set in state law. It's either four with a citywide mayor, five, six with a citywide mayor, or seven. You can go to nine, but that'd be, every other house would have to be a council member in, in Brisbane. So, so that is more your decision, and it really boils down much more to the question of, do you want a citywide elected mayor or do you want a rotating mayor?
Okay, thank you very much.
Quickly, we had a discussion about this in our last meeting, and Doug shared that if you're a charter city, like there are some charter cities that have bigger districts that may have more than one, like, like a city might have, let's say, three districts, for example, when they have five council members. And so they may have like two representatives from one district, two representatives from another, and then last representative from a third, for example, as long as it's, everything's proportionate. But that type of setup doesn't protect you from California Voting Rights Act claim. So while charter cities are able to do that, it doesn't, like, there are certain things that we could do, but they don't necessarily protect us from that liability, so to speak. So, and that's one thing that, you know, Doug was really great at bringing up multiple times. Cliff and I asked tons of questions, and he was really good at saying, well, you could do X, Y, and Z, but that really wouldn't, if the point is you want to protect yourself from this type of lawsuit, those types of decisions wouldn't do that. And so I felt that that was really, you know, great feedback, not just in getting us the demographic information, but also really understanding the type of decisions that we need to make. So if we're going to do all this for that purpose, we need to make sure that we draw districts in a way that protect us.
So, one of the questions with mapping, and maybe we're getting way ahead, we would have to include, include all areas of Brisbane in the map. And currently, we have an area that has no population. So that would have to be included on the map somehow.
Yes.
Even it has zero population. And, you know, down the road, it may have a huge population. But I, I don't understand how we would be able to work that in to the current drawing of the maps or, you know, and how you would understand what the demographics of that future community is going to be. And then also the demographics of how it could be shared, concerns, or.
Yeah.
Any of that when they aren't even there yet.
So you always plan for, you always plan for right now? And then you, once you move to districts, you're required every 10 years, when the new census data comes out, to look at your districts again and make any necessary adjustments? So the only time that you would look at changing your districts in between that 10-year period is on two occasions. One, if the city annexed, has to be annexation, annexed an area with a large population. Or two, the city maybe went to have, like, the city had seven council members, for example, and now you need to have two more districts to represent two more council members. So that's the only case in which you would redraw district lines within that 10-year period. And Doug can correct me if I'm wrong on that.
Very well said.
So when the Baylands gets built out, at some point, you know, the districts will need to be redrawn to accommodate that. And so there could be a population swell five years from now, for example, and that might coincide with like the next census. And then there could be an even larger population that comes in after that. Those people wouldn't be accounted for until the following census.
So whatever district or districts got that unpopulated land would have to just absorb that population and with the representative map that they have at that time.
Right.
Until the, the next census, and then we would redraw the districts.
But the next census doesn't come out for another.
Every 10 years.
Every 10 years, so.
Well, but it doesn't get published for longer than that.
This is true, but I guess, you know, I think that the drawing the district boundaries accommodates for the lag, so it's probably just like every 10 years, like a 10-year cycle. Yeah, yeah, so.
Yeah, exactly. You're right, the census, the next census is in 2030. That data comes out in 2031, and so the lines would be redrawn before your 2032 election.
Yeah. And then the districts have to be contiguous. So you can't have, like, you know, let's say, part of Sierra Point and part of the ridge be in the same district with another district in the middle. So all, it all has to touch where the boundaries are, and then you draw the line. So you can still get creative on the shapes, but all the landmass has to be within it. So Crocker would be included in the district, all of Sierra Point would be included in the district, all the Baylands, whether or not those places would ever have large amounts of housing. They all have to be included.
I have a question. So if you look at Brisbane currently, and those of us who've run for reelection know the voting propensity of people within the town. And there are certain areas in town currently that the percentage of people who vote 5 of 5 is over 50%. But there's another area in Brisbane where the voters who vote 5 of 5 is only 6%. That's data I have. So is any of that taken into consideration? Or is it just if you draw the boundaries and the person who gets District 25 is the district that has only 6% of the current registered voters vote 6% of the time? I mean, how do we take that into consideration when drawing a district if you already know that information in advance?
So both state and federal rules are that the districts have to have an equal number of people. So it's not based on registered voters. So it is very common and natural for one district to end up with many more active voters than another one. And to some degree, that's kind of the goal of the Voting Rights Act, is when you have a community that has a low turnout neighborhood within it, to give that neighborhood a voice where they can elect even with their low turnout numbers because ideally, everyone in that new district would be from that low turnout community. But yes, it does lead to, in many jurisdictions, distinct differences in how many votes are cast in one district versus another. And that's just the result of that rule, that it's equal number of people, not equal number of voters in each district.
Thank you.
So do you want to move forward with any other points or?
No, I think we can open it up for public comment, and then, you know, Cliff and I can follow it up. The packet is super comprehensive, and all of the information that Cliff and I contemplated is in the packet. And that's why we had Doug come here, because we wanted you to be able to ask the same questions that we asked in the meeting, because there wasn't going to be enough time to get that in the staff report. So at this point, I think if you want to just open it up for public comment, and then we can talk about our rationale for certain things after, if you want to do that.
Of course.
Sorry, I have actually a question for legal counsel.
Sure.
In the, in the report, there's some detail from our city clerk that she had gathered. It's referenced about the city of Ojai, and I'm just curious. It mentions that they had a Measure M, which changed future council elections, abandoning district-based seats in favor of ranked choice ballots.
Yes.
And that framework would start in November 2024. Do you really think that that would cover CBRA?
No.
Can, yeah. It's one of the ways it can. Ranked choice allows a population, as Doug described, who may not be heard from now, to actually rank their first candidate number one across the board. When everybody else rates that candidate two or three, candidate tends to win. We've seen that in Oakland, for example. So it is one of the ways that you can comply.
Thank you, because I've never heard that.
Yeah, let me just add too, on Ojai's specifics, they did approve that measure, but it's contingent on a change in state law that would allow them to make that change because they're a general law city, so general law cities aren't allowed to do ranked choice voting, and only county registrar being able to conduct a ranked choice vote election. So they want to do it someday.
Thank you for that clarification.
So I'll go ahead and open it up to public comments. Are there any members of the public who'd like to make a comment on the information that's been presented tonight?
Madam Mayor, I see a hand raised from Roland.
Okay, please go ahead, Roland.
Thank you, and I'm actually disappointed that I'm currently the only one who wants to make comment. I think this is wonderful. I mean, I can't tell you how excited I am about this. And I'm really looking forward to Caroline posting the link to the DRA tool on the website so that hopefully multiple constituents will be interested in experimenting with the maps and see how things hang together. I've got a quick comment. I don't know if you covered this, but I come from San Jose, and we've just realigned the election of the mayor, which present presidential election. And I hope you will consider that, because that typically ensures that you will have a higher voting turnout when the time comes to elect the mayor. And in closing, I do have a quick ask in the interest of transparency. It's whether it would be possible to post a link to Monday, last Monday, 13th, Charter and Redistricting Committee on the website. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other members of the public that would like to comment?
We have Nancy Lacrimana.
Oh, I didn't see a slip.
I didn't put in a slip. I really wanted to sit back and listen, but I'm thrilled. I'm, so much great information here. It's such a progressive move for us. I really appreciate everything that Councilmember Davis and Councilmember Lentz have done to kind of steer us very calmly, clearly into situation here and hear all this information. And I was just texting with the manager of the Mobile Home Park, because I was telling her about what I saw, and I made a comment on the street coming up. And she was saying, do you think it's possible we could do this? And we could do this someday for the Mobile Home Park? And I said, well, I happen to be in a meeting, and there's, there's hope, that there's possibility down the road that your, your area will be recognized, that you'll have a voice. And she said, she said, I'm ecstatic. And I've never even met her, I mean, to be honest with you, I've only seen her posts. So I really think it, obviously, the big, big key here is information, answering the questions, just like you've made some wonderful questions. I didn't know a lot of these answers, and I'm just so excited that we have this opportunity to discuss. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further hands raised, Madam Mayor.
I'm sorry, no other people? Okay, thank you. So we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and go to discussion. So on your discussions about whether it would be an elected mayor or go to an appointed, you know, continue with an appointed mayor, I see in your recommendation, that your committee's recommendation is that the duties and the substance of what the mayor does would not change. But it wouldn't be a member of the council that ran for mayor? You'd have to run a standalone campaign if you were running for a mayor?
If you're running for a mayor, yes. But you would be a member of the council. But we also provided another option, which was the having a hard criteria that would also be voted on by the public, and that would have a rotation.
I have a clarification, actually, for staff. So if you ran for mayor for a two-year term, when, once that two-year term expired, you would either run again for mayor, you would have to run for council, or you would just not run, right? So you're not presumed that you have a council term for four years, and you're mayor for two, right?
Correct, you're running independently for mayor. And I think the way the two of you discussed it, that, I mean, what often I think happens in these arrangements is that people will be on the city council, and they'll get termed out, and then they'll run for mayor. You tried to preclude that from being the case by saying, no, your, your two years or your four years of mayor would be part of your 12-year limit.
Yes. With, and then the other option we talked about was having that strict rotation, having that basically like be set in stone. And we actually did hear from a member of the public at our meetings that they felt that that was a really great alternative, because it addressed what the concern was initially, that, you know, maybe some council members were precluded from being able to be mayor, and they felt that it was nice to know that everyone would have a chance to be mayor, and that everyone's favorite council member, so to speak, at some point, you would know when they would be mayor next. So there seemed to be support from the public, at least a member, one member of the, or maybe two of the public for that option. And then, of course, if you did that, then you would have five districts instead of four.
Well, it would be concerning to me that you'd have someone who ran for an elected mayor that may never have been a council member and doesn't know how the proto, I shouldn't say the protocol, because I guess it's different no matter who it is. But, you know, wouldn't really know the, what needs to be?
The ins and outs.
The ins and outs of how to do it.
Of the role, yeah.
And, you know, certainly, it's a learning curve for all of us every time we rotate in and out of being a mayor.
That would concern me too, Madam Mayor. It's like, oh, I want to be the CEO, I'm just going to run for this position and wing it.
Well, and it certainly isn't that, you know, I assume that an elected mayor would have one vote out of, you know,
Exactly the same, it wouldn't be a difference. It's just that instead of the council appointing the mayor, the public would vote in who would be the mayor.
But, but only for two years instead of a council member who's four years.
Correct.
And so you'd...
And you don't have two terms as that mayor.
Yeah, you could easily.
But didn't you say, didn't you say that an outsider could run for mayor with absolutely no experience?
Yes.
That's, was my point. Somebody wants to be the CEO of the city with no experience about what we all do is a big concern for me.
Well, also, you could have somebody that could conceivably be the mayor for four years straight. These are all things, you know, these are all things we're just providing to you as
Information, yeah.
Information.
So, and, you know, we, I think, tried to address some of those concerns with a very strict rotation policy. And I think it gets at the wishes of the constituents that have expressed concern. And, you know, it also kind of stays as closely aligned with what we've been doing. The other thing with that is we could just institute that, or we could put that specifically to the voters, a strict rotation policy. The voters could enact, which would be set in stone, because if it was something that was just voted on by us, we could enact that right away. However, another council could overturn that in the future. So it's not binding. If you send it to the voters, then it would have to go to the voters again to undo. The other concern that I had is that when you're the mayor, it's very clear from the emails that you get that people's thought of what the mayor can do is not really what the mayor can do. And the authority that the mayor has is, in many people's minds, much greater than really what the authority actually is. And so part of that year that you're mayor is a lot of educating people who email just you because they just want to get right to the, to the big boss, right? Which is really not how it works. It takes three of us to make anything happen. And so I think by having somebody that's rotating all the time, it diminishes some of that, where it's like that one person who for two years or for four years straight is fielding all these things. Yes, I'm the mayor, but like, actually, you know, I can't just make that happen for you. It doesn't work like that. And so I think, you know, it maybe encourages more working as a body. But that's, you know, everyone has a different opinion on that. So that is something that we talked about, too.
So is it possible, from what you guys discussed, that we go ahead and do some demographics to see if there's, you know, obvious groups or communities of concern, or protected groups, or how we might be able to? So we get the data, and then we do or don't move forward with the data, depending on how it comes out or what it looks like? You know, did you just, did you think of what would happen in that case? And then I did see something about San Bruno?
Milbrae.
Milbrae going back away from district elections, because, you know, and I always, you know, maybe it's wishful thinking, that I feel that Brisbane has a lot of community concerns that are for the whole community.
Yeah.
And I wouldn't say that, you know, I think some of the perspectives different, differ from different people you talk to, but it's not necessarily based on where they live, what their concerns are different. But I don't know how you address that.
Certainly, I think at the Baylands, right? Like, there will be a time where people are really voting on things for their district. I think that's what happened in Milbrae. And because the districts are small, recalls are easy. And so, you know, I think council members voted for what was in the best interest of the city, and not necessarily what was in the best interest of their district. Their district didn't like that, and because the district's so small, recall is like that. And so I think that's what spurned, like, the conversation about moving away from districts again. One of the things that we did discuss was if we went to districts and two council members were in the same district, and let's say
Currently, you mean?
Currently. So however they were drawn, right? Let's say Colleen and I are in the same district, and I'm, we're not on the same election cycle. So when it's my turn to run, if that's the year that sets that district, then, you know, there's concern that that could, like, boot her out. So what could actually happen, if I'm understanding what Doug said correctly, is that even though Colleen is midterm, she could still run. And she could still be on the ballot for that district. So we could run, we could run
Head to head.
Head to head. I don't want to say against each other, but we could run head to head. And then, and so it diminishes some of And then, and, and so it diminishes some of that, like, what, I think that happened in another city, maybe San Mateo, you were saying?
San Bruno.
San Bruno, someone felt like they just kind of lost out on the ability to represent their district because of the timing in which districts were instituted. But then, you know, that could impact possibly the amount of terms then that she would be able to serve because she had a two-year term and then would have a four and then a four. And so that choice that, you know, she might make or I might make would lop off two years. So we also talked about appointing, so that, that might be a reason why you would want to wait to see what districts make sense. If you want to, I don't know, take any of that into consideration. Also Cliff and I talked about being appointed to the council. So if somebody has to resign, the council appoints somebody new. And they assume a term of, let's say, two years, for example, that doesn't count towards their 12 because they're being appointed. But if there was an election and somebody ran and secured a two-year term, then that would count. So we can finesse that, but it's just something that we discussed, you know, obviously looking for everyone's input on that. So then that person would serve 10 years instead of 14 because they would presumably have the choice to choose to run for the four-year seat instead of the two-year seat because it's never just one seat at a time that's open. And you're choosing what seat you want to run for. So considering those things, the council might want to wait and see what the demographics look like, see where the best boundaries are and what's suggested from the demographer. And then kind of look at the other things with that information in mind.
I have a question. Did you guys discuss practical items at all? Because I, I could see this coming up. If we were all districts right now and we had $10,000 to spend on road repair, you're going to be vying for your district, you're going to be vying for your district. Colleen's a bit quiet, she might not have as big a voice as Madison. And Terry might have a bigger voice than all of us. And so we're all fighting for that same pot of money. How, how does that get reconciled in a town like us? Where, you know, anybody who's living down at the Mobile Home Park is going to say, we had a lot of stuff that needs to be done. But up on Humboldt, they're going to go, Glen Park and Humboldt is a nightmare. We, that, that needs to be fixed. So we're going to have infighting, if I'm not mistaken, about how we split up that $10,000. No, I think my street needs it more. You're going to say your street needs it more. How does that get resolved?
Well, it's certainly possible. I mean, this happens in councils all across the country that have districts.
It's pork barrel.
So there's no way to know how this council or any future council would behave. You would hope that we would do things all for the good of Brisbane. It's definitely possible though, like at the Baylands, they're separated, they really view themselves maybe as a almost a totally different city. I think that's highly likely that that would happen. You also, you know, the constituents resolve it because they recall you. And it's because it's very easy to do, you don't need that many signatures when you're only representing 600 people. For example, so. And that's exactly what happened in Milbrae, a city who is much larger than us. They voted for something on behalf of, if I'm understanding it right, on behalf of what was best for the city. And their constituents didn't want that project in their neighborhood or what have you, they didn't like that choice, so they recalled them. And so you, you write, like, council members have to, you know, have to figure out how to get in balance with that because, you know, you want to do what's best for your city, but you're also elected by your constituents who are now a very small, select group of people. And you represent them too and their interests, which may be different than the greater interests of this, of the town. Certainly, that's something that I think people of the ridge have expressed why they want a representative, because maybe they have different interests than the rest of the town. And that's why they specifically want a voice on the council. So I think that's very likely that those situations would happen.
Yeah. You know, trying to predict the future is, yeah, very difficult. So we just have to look at what is occurring today, right? And why are we here now? And there have been concerns from our community for us to address these things. And we know that one of our neighborhoods, right, one-third of our city really has not had representation at, at the council level. They've had one, but, you know, one over quite a few years is, is, is not a high percentage, right? We know the demographics too, from our census. If we hire Doug and, and his firm, we're going to get deeper into the weeds and, and understand that. But we do know that we're a minority-majority city. When you look at the other cities that we evaluated and, and Ingrid, thank you so much for providing the data because it was really helpful for us and I hope that it was helpful for you when you were looking at the staff report. Really, the only thing that's, that's similar between our, you know, our city and the two small ones is that we're small cities. But they're majority Caucasian, you know, significantly. And ours is, ours is more diverse. And I think that makes our city better in, in a way that, like you were talking about, Terry, about like getting different perspectives, right? We have that ability to have perspective from a wide swath of different backgrounds. And I think that's, that's a strength for us. And so being able to go through a process that maybe enhances the ability to bring different perspectives onto this dais. I mean, we're all public servants, but you, if someone else took our spot, that's okay, right? We have to be good with that because we know that if that occurred, that came from the public, right? And so we have to trust the public to make the right decisions for how the city moves forward. And so really, these three things that are on the table, that, that they address that. And, and I'm glad that, that there's some folks that are excited about us having the discussion.
The other thing too, to address what Karen said, is of course you need three votes for anything, right? So there has to be some level of camaraderie and collaboration to make anything happen. And so, you know, hopefully there are strong relationships there and there's respect there. And you might vote for something for someone's district and then they might vote for something for you later on. Because you have a, you know, you're just all playing well in the sandbox and so, because
Without sand.
Right, right, without sand. Because we all, you know, we all, three people need to agree on something, right? I feel like I'm always blocking you all.
So everyone's staring at me. Did you want me to say something?
No, no, I was just thinking you might want to.
Okay, I'll say something. I, I think the issue is very complex. Many years ago, I lived in San Francisco and I watched them go from at-large elections to districts. And there was a mayor and supervisor killed because of animosity between districts. So we can see on the far end of how bad it can get. Then there's other places, went to districts and cities and everything was fine. It's, it's a loaded question, no matter what. It's, nobody has the crystal ball. My overriding concern are unintended consequences, which I don't think the general public realizes. That being said, I'm not against moving forward, looking at these things. I just think the public deserves the full picture. And they're not going to do that research on their own. And, and I've done a little polling on the PCE board, so I talked to city council members from other cities. And I've heard some of the horror stories of what happens. I've heard the animosity that ends up on councils with elected mayors. And I've heard the problems of district elections where nobody would run in a district and then someone runs that nobody even wants to vote for. So there are inherent problems. I'm not saying that, that means it shouldn't happen. I'm just saying, be careful what you ask for because it may not turn out the way you want. And that brings one more question that I happen to think of because, you know, I kind of posit pros and cons. What if we move ahead on district elections? And let's say it's several election cycles later and we still have had zero members of protected classes elected to this council? Then what happens? I'm, I'm just curious. I mean, are we then in line for a lawsuit because the electorate didn't elect someone? I, I'm just looking for all the things. I think we need to check all the boxes and find out.
Tom, why don't we end on this too? But the, the key thing is that when you're in districts, you're in, districts are a safe harbor from the California Party Rights Act. So as long as you have districts, they can't sue you under that law. If you've drawn the, the districts in a way that dilutes their voting strength, then you can be sued for how the districts are drawn, but there's no failure to perform lawsuit. Tom, anything to add to that?
Yeah, you know, thank you Douglas for that. You, you, that is something that Madsen and I have talked about in every single subcommittee meeting is how do we get to the safe harbor? Right? So that we protect the city from litigation. Always focused on that. And what you have before you is a way to avoid potential lawsuits against the city.
Well, certainly districts are. I think it's, you know, the elected mayor and term limits are just other things that we're considering because the public has brought them up. And I don't think that either of those things have anything to do with a CVRA lawsuit. This council could choose to institute districts and not do anything about those other two items. It's not an all or nothing type of approach. I think, like, you know, it seems like there is an interest to really get the information. I don't know if we're ready yet, but it would, you know, if we are, then maybe we could authorize the subcommittee to work with Doug and his firm. And the extra 1,500 not to exceed was if for some reason the council felt like we needed another meeting, that we wouldn't have to come back for authority to get that. So definitely the four required by law plus an additional if that's needed. But I think once we have that information, then we're going to be in a place where we could really delve into the consequences. And the community could have a better understanding of those things, but also the benefits. So.
May I interject one more? I think if you look at the composition of a lot of our city committees and commissions, it, it's been a recruiting effort to ensure that there's a lot of diversity on those committees and commissions. Because you look at this council, how many of us served on another committee or commission before sitting here? And it's, and it's a perfect way for someone to learn about how government functions, how the city functions. That being said, there are a lot of younger members of the community on those city committees and commissions that I've even spoken to about and said, hey, someday, you know, you really should think about running for the council. And the problem is they all say, I'm in the middle of my career, I, I absolutely cannot do this now. I mention this only because I don't think districts are inherently a bad thing. I think the part that is maybe not understood is that it will put a greater burden on our residents to forage out more candidates than they're accustomed to. Because you're going to have to, unless you're going to have unopposed candidates in district, you're going to have to have a lot more candidates running. And, and that's something the public is going to need to be involved in. Because I, I think the worst scenario is the one city where they told me someone running unopposed that nobody wanted to vote for. So it, it will, it, it hopefully would encourage people to be more involved and try to encourage more participation and maybe considering someday being on the council.
I think the other thing here too is like, there's a lot going on at our state level about this issue. A lot of lawsuits, a lot of things that are up for discussion. Obviously Ojai, you know, passed Measure M, but that's contingent on a state decision. I think that this will, maybe there might be more clear direction from the state of California in the next few years, maybe four years. But in the meantime, what's happening is, you know, these lawsuits and they are fast and furious. And there seems to be no, it's very hard to contest. So the council could adopt something and as times change, times change, the council could put it forward to the voters to adjust after we have a few years under our belt in this new system. And everyone realizes how great it is or how not great it is. And at that point, things might have changed at the state level where, you know, there, it may not be an issue to go back to at-large voting. We just don't know.
So is it possible for us tonight to approve the demographic contract? But not necessarily to the point that it's at the funding level? To do the demographics and the actual that kind of work? And bring it back to us so we can see what that's going to look like before we proceed to map drawing and public meetings and everything else? So that we, we know what the actual demographics we're looking at are?
So I'm, I'm going to ask Doug to kind of help me out with this. But I, I think if we did step one and the, I guess, step two point one, that would get us some basic information that then the council can decide whether they want to take the further steps. Or I'll, I'll defer to you in terms of what you think kind of gets them to a point where they can have an informed conversation.
Yeah, and I would just add, you're exactly right. There's no commitment to step two. If the council gets the step one report and decides we're good, we don't want to go forward, that's perfectly fine and the work would stop right there.
Okay, so we could do just the $2,000 on the step one?
And probably a little more, I would assume that we would need to go a little bit more on what areas look like. But I don't know what step one would be.
My guess is that, you know, you'll, you'll probably want to do some of the stuff in step two just to kind of have a better understanding of this.
I would think so, so that we have a, a better picture, but Karen, you had some comment?
I, I have questions and comments here. So as you all know, I'm fairly fiscally prudent with how we spend our money. And as this is a, a brand new avenue of monetary spending for us, I would like us to keep tabs on exactly how much every single thing we do about this is costing us, including what we've already spent up to now on staff time. I think it, one of the questions that just keeps getting thrown at me over and over by people in the community is, how much is this going to cost us? And I said, I promise I will get you a proper financial analysis step by step along the way of what we're spending. So that is my ask. I agree with this step one, getting through there, step two point one for sure. But I know we've already spent a lot of staff time on it. I'd like to know exactly to the penny what we're spending on this so we can report accurately and honestly back to the community what this is costing us to do this study.
I'm, I'm going to disagree just a little bit with you on that. Because, you know, a lot of the staff time is soft time. You know, where we've had our city clerk doing stuff. And, you know, and, and perhaps our city attorney can say, well, I've, you know, put six hours, eight hours, 20 hours, whatever into it. But I don't think that we're going to get a cost down to the penny of every moment staff has contemplated what next steps may be.
Okay, dollar. Okay, dollar.
The mayor said it well. What, what we can do is provide, you know, when we, when we met with you back in March, we got authority to spend so much staff time. So we can have a general kind of accounting of what time we spent. We don't do cost accounting in terms of staff time on, uh, for soft costs like myself, Ingrid. The attorneys may be a little bit different than that. So ours is more of a guesstimate. At this point, you, you know, Ingrid has spent some time on this. I've spent some time. I don't contemplate it late at night. So there won't be any others.
I spent lots of time, but I'm basically free.
Yeah.
Yeah, we are. We are all pretty much free.
The only other person that spent time on this was, uh, John Swicky and I think a little bit of his staff on the census. So we'll get you a, an accounting of that and keep, keep track of that. But it's, it's, those are more, um, and they're not really estimates, but they're, 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 they're rounded more, right? Because we'll just give you, I mean, in my day, Ingrid's day, you know, I'm working on two or three things at the same time. So it's like, what do I assign to what? Right?
So, so at, at this point, are you looking for us to give you an, uh, uh, an approval or the, for the council to take a vote to approve the demographic profile and test maps?
So.
Step one plus a little bit so that we can move this forward and come back at another meeting, either first to the subcommittee to review that data and then to us or direct to us however they feel it's best handled. And would you want us to take a vote on that? Or can we just give you a, um, a direction from the council to give you the okey dokey to go ahead?
I, I think the okey dokey will work for this, yeah.
Is everybody okay with an okey dokey?
I think that's good. You know, I do have a question though for Doug. So I just want to make sure that we're comfortable with the deliverables, right? So Doug, I, I know that you need to do the, the in-person meetings in order to present accurate maps. But in step two, item one, you have that virtual presentation, I guess similar to what you, well, it'd be a little bit more in-depth than, than what you did tonight. But could you bring back some maps that you know that you would not use? Because I know that's part of the rules that you can't use a map, you can't show a map that without having the, the public hearings and use that in your decision-making process, right? So could you just kind of give us a little bit of what you would show to us in that presentation, please?
So, so we look at, is there a, a federal Voting Rights Act requirement to draw a majority protected class seat? Be it Asian-Americans or Latinos or whatever? So we do look at that. We draw a test ma, call it a test map, but it's really just one district to see if we can draw a geographic compact area that would be a majority. So that's the test we run. We don't draw the whole city. And, and as you were just saying, you know, the, the rule is that we have to have those first two public hearings to get public input before a council member, staff or consultant draw any draft maps. So we can't be doing anything that would give you a hint of what they would look like in the end. Without getting into that.
But they would show population clusters. It would show population clusters where you could, you know, and I don't know if you'd show that by the block or by the, you know, hundred square feet or whatever it is. But we'd be able to see population clusters and know what kind of demographic we're looking at in a specific area on a larger picture without any sectioning.
Yes, yes, definitely. You know, like how many people are up in the northwest area? So divide that by the number of people per district, which I'll give you. And you know how many seats it has if you're up in that area. You know in the southern area, how many people there are, you know, according to the census and the different census blocks and that's how, how many seats are likely to be in that area. Certainly you'll get those ballpark numbers and have a ballpark census.
Okay, all right. And, and it just curious. So if the council was to say add one virtual meeting for $1,500. So we did the step one, step two plus one, and then we had just one meeting. Could you then provide maps? Is that, or is that, am I pushing you too much? And if, I apologize if that is making you uncomfortable.
Yes, please, please, Tom.
Would just, uh, if you gave the city manager authority up to 10,000 bucks, I guess, not saying he'll spend it, but up to 10,000 or up to 11,500. We can work with Doug on what's legal and what's not. We don't want to put him in a position where he's pretty correct or it's going to come back and haunt the city.
Yes, okay.
Okay. Um, well, I think we gave him the okey dokey.
Okay.
Right?
Yes.
I don't know if you specified a number and I don't know if you need to. Clay, do you need a number?
I mean, not legally. I mean, I've got a signing authority, as you know.
He is signing authority for over that. So we want him to go ahead. We want him to have the authority and the, the latitude that he needs to go ahead and to make sure that we get the information that we're going to need to be able to make a good decision for the city.
Right. Great.
All right.
Thank you very much. And, and thank you Doug for coming to this meeting and participating. We appreciate all the information you've given us.
Yeah, thank you Doug.
Thank you. You've been very clear and concise as, as, as far as the subject allows us to.
My pleasure. Look forward to working with all of you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you so much. Okay, that's going to move us on.
Okay, so we don't want to, what, what about the other two items?
We're going to talk, we're going to talk about it all collectively once.
Well, okay, once we get this other stuff back.
Yeah, because like the thing about the term limits, like if, if two council members were overlapping or like elected mayor, you know, if you looked how big the districts are, if you went from four to five, how big of a change that would be in terms of population in each district? Doug can also provide us a couple of different, like if you did, if wanted to do four districts or five districts.
Well, I think that'll all come when we get the, the more information.
Okay. Yeah, no, that sounds good.
Okay, so that brings us to staff reports. And we have the city manager's report on upcoming activities.
So I'm going to turn this over to Carolyn Chung, our assistant to the city manager and communications director. She's got a short presentation for you.
Whoa. Just two slides. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. Clay had asked me to provide an overview of how the committee will receive alerts and notifications from the city in the event of an emergency. As you may be aware, we just had a wildfire awareness event in the park on Saturday. There was information there for SMC Alert. Matt from our office was there signing some individuals up on the spot with his laptop. And police was there as well. And SMC Alert is an opt-in service. You may know that it is available to receive messages on via text, email and also voice. I just want to underscore the importance of making sure you're registered with an address on there because they will know where to send the alerts based on the address you have. And you don't just have to have the address in Brisbane if you have loved ones in another city within the county. You can put in up to, I think, five different addresses. They also encourage residents to sign up for text, email and voice because not all messages are sent using all three modes. And also you can put a preferred language when you register, but not all messages will be sent in your preferred language either. So they just want to make sure everyone is signed up. You just go to smcalert.info if you want to just register or check your registration. It's really easy to just go in to the profile settings and make sure your address is there. Also, I just wanted to mention that some years ago, there was a campaign to just text 94005 or Brisbane zip code to a short code. And so all those people that signed up during that time, because we shared that message too, did get carried over to smcalert.info. But you just want to have those addresses of the areas that you want to receive alerts entered into the backend. And so we will use, I, myself and the Director of Emergency Services, also our police commander, are trained on how to send emergency alerts via SMC Alert. There's also a duty chief at the County Department of Emergency Management that can send out alerts on our behalf if we need them to. And the next slide is our different ways that we can engage a little bit more with residents during emergencies. So I'll be reviewing our different social media sites. We share similar messaging on our Facebook and Instagram. So we encourage people to go and follow these various platforms. If you use social media, you can scan that QR code and get taken to a page that has the direct links to these various pages. North County Fire Authority does a lot of messages or tweets on Twitter or X. And so that is their predominant way of sharing emergency incident information as well. The Police Department uses Facebook and Instagram. And then the city has Facebook, Instagram, Nextdoor and Twitter as well. So just wanted to remind everyone and those watching, you can register for SMC Alert at smcalert.info. Go to, follow the city's social media so that you can interact a little bit more. I'll oftentimes look during events and peruse comments and get back to folks there. And we have our electronic sign boards, of course, in town that are very easy to easily update. So I will do that and use that as another way to get real-time information out to our residents. And if you haven't yet signed up for the city manager's update or the weekly blast, you can do so at brisbanecity.org/blast. Of course, that's not as time-sensitive information, but it's a recap of things that have happened. We shared about the fire that happened this past week at a residence here due to a dryer lint fire. So just various preparedness tips in there, less time-sensitive. And also our website is a way for residents to interact with us. We have contact forms. The Police Department has an anonymous contact form too. So plenty of ways, depending on the level of engagement that a resident would like to interact with the staff. That's all. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, may I ask a question?
Of course.
And either from Carolina or Caroline. Do we have the ability, some time back, I recall different utilities used to add a current message to the bills somewhere near the top? Do we have the ability to add a message to the water bills? So we reach a segment that might not be interconnected in all these other venues to just say, sign up for SMC Alert?
We can add, but the space is limited.
It could be very short.
Yeah, so we would have to look.
It might just reach a whole different segment that we don't otherwise if they're not signed up for the blast.
You mean of people that actually open their water bills?
I hope they do.
Usually those, it's, it's all or nothing. It's all of the community as opposed to just select unfortunately currently.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, we are going to go on to county-wide assignments and subcommittee reports. Who would like to start? Sounds like Karen was on all of them.
Karen's on all of them. She could just do them all.
I'll do them all.
Do them all.
Okay, go for it. Yeah, where was everybody else, by the way?
We were there. I was there.
Okay. So we had a Complete Streets Safety Committee meeting. Basically what we got to do was pare down this long list of things to a, a doable list that had some reality attached to it. Do you want to add to that, Colleen?
Complete Streets was asked to do the, the study about the new state law about as you approach an intersection, the 20-foot rule from the corner. That's really an important project because citations are going to be issued as of January 2025. And someone has to go through the whole city and not just identify the corners, but make some suggestions on rational ways. Some of those corners, maybe we would request less than 20 feet. So Complete Streets did a wonderful job on the parking permit study. So they've been asked to do this job as well. And they had a whole list of other items.
I think we could make their job a lot easier by maybe staff identifying some of the major problems. Corner of Tulare turning right on to San Bruno. Some of the bigger intersections where that parking is going to be taken away and people are going to be pretty upset initially, just so they know it's not us. This is a state requirement.
Well, the, the bonus of, of having Complete Streets involved as well is that from having been on the committee, when you're out doing these observational studies, you'll have residents will come out and talk to you. And so you become the conduit to staff to give them the feedback that you get from the residents. And that allows staff to evaluate that input as well. So they're in the midst of this project. They understand the, the importance of it and that's their focus.
We had a lot of fun at the Public Art Advisory Committee. Our consultants are doing such an amazing job. They're very well received by the public, very well received by the entire committee and stimulated the committee into coming up with really good responses to some of the questions they want to put together for our master art plan. And that was worked out in a, a very lively fashion. Do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, so basically Nine Dot Arts is working on a survey for the public to respond about basically how they feel about public art. What types of public art are they interested in?
Where do you want it?
Where do you want it? What do you think it should elicit? You know, global recognition, placemaking, you, all these different things. Civic pride, um, and how much do you know about the city's existing public art program? So on and so forth. And then from, based on those responses, they have a really good starting point when they get here in person. Cause they're going to be.
Here in July.
Here in July for several events. Flea, um, farmer's market, concert in the park and citywide garage sale. And so based on the responses, they're going to be following up with people to get even more detailed feedback to help inform the master plan. So they were running by their survey questions with us and we kind of cleared up some things that we felt were maybe a little bit confusing. And we took a question out. And so we just kind of made sure that the survey was like ready for showtime.
Yeah, good question.
Yes.
It, it might help the public. I noticed the survey, there was a link in the blast. Are there, could you maybe mention other ways the public's going to be able to access it and what the deadline is?
So it's currently, there's an article about it in the Luminary and there is a QR code that people can scan. That'll bring them directly to the survey. I'm not sure what other ways. I mean, kind of all of the, Caroline.
They're also at the, um, print, there's copies at the Brisbane Library, City Hall, Sunrise Room.
Oh yeah, Sunrise Room.
We're trying to get it out as much as possible. There'll be a big article in the Star Newsletter with it also.
And it'll be on the rotating notice board. And the deadline?
I don't remember.
July 19th. July 19th.
Thank you, Angel.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Planning issues was all you. I had a collection of input from residents about things having to do with planning permits, interfacing public works. So I've been amassing all of this and decided it was time maybe to just talk to staff on ways we could improve things. Maybe take a 30,000-foot view on how we're doing things, whether we're serving the public in the best way possible. Cause there's always room for improvement. That's not to say we've not been doing an adequate job. It's just, there were suggestions that staff will be looking into. And it was very promising to learn that the new planning department software will be implemented. I thought it was July. Is it really August? I thought it was July. Is it really August? July, yeah. And, and that will certainly streamline a lot of things. So, um, really appreciated the time. And also we brought up SMC Alert as one of the best ways. And, and if people go, well, what kind of emergencies? There's earthquakes, there's fires, there's evacuations, there's active shooters, water, sewer, electrical. We're not PG&E, obviously, but, um, any information that we can get out can go on there. So it's, it's, I've been on it for a long time. It's really valuable. So, thank you.
Great. So that brings us to written communications. Um, city clerk, do we have any?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Council members received four written correspondences. One from Carrickis, abandoned, unregistered cars. Another one from Dilworth, rezoned 2024. From Lawrence, county violations of the Federal and State Information Access Acts. And from Strecker, Complete Streets resignation.
Thank you. Um, brings us to oral communications, number two. Are there any members of the public wishing to make a public comment on something that was not on our agenda? I see no one in the audience.
We have a hand.
Anyone online?
Hand raised from Roland, Madam Mayor.
Okay, please go ahead, Roland.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, and I have a, a couple of very quick comments. Uh, first of all, I would like to echo, uh, council member Mackin's comment about SMC Alert. I've been using SEC alerts for over 10 years and it's wonderful, uh, for fires, uh, flooding, um, you know, PG&E outages, uh, Amber Alert, uh, seniors with Alzheimer wandering around. And then two SEC alerts. And the last comment I'd like to make is, is about, um, um, demographics. And you are in a unique position in Brisbane. I discovered this by accident. Is that the entire city is covered by single zip codes. So if you Google 94005, you will, uh, find a website called unitedstatzzipcodes.org. And if you click on population, it really gives you some extraordinary information about, um, Brisbane demographics. But obviously it doesn't give you any breakdown of the, uh, specific location or district level because you don't have a d- district boundary. Anyway, I hope you find that information useful. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other members of the public?
Um, another one, Madam Mayor, Chris Florowski.
Okay, thank you. Please go ahead.
Hello there. Thank you very much. It's been a very interesting meeting tonight. Um, I'm just going to note that today was Bike to Work Day. And I was assigned at a Energizer station in South San Francisco. But I hear that the situation was the same here in Brisbane, where, which was, there are much fewer bicyclists on the road this time. And I happened to ask a couple of people about it and people who have ridden in the past and in fact encouraged me to be a rider. And I was surprised that the answer was, "It is not safe." And I said, "But last year was great." And they said, "Right, it's gotten worse. It is not safe." So, uh, it's an invitation to perhaps increase the priority of that in the work plan for the Safe Streets Committee. And just a minor correction, uh, CEO Kelly for High Speed Rail has resigned, but he is continuing to be the acting CEO until a replacement is found. So that position is not vacant. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other members of the public?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, well, with that, I am going to adjourn this meeting at 9:22 PM. Thank you all for attending.